I'd like to call this public meeting to order. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to invite up to the podium Manuel Griffin. Mr. Griffin is currently serving as a Senior Vice Commander of Post 5544 in Jessup, Pennsylvania. He served seven years from 1966 to 1973 and retired as a Specialist Four in the United States Army. In 1968 through 1969, two years, he served as Engineer in Construction during his time in Vietnam. He currently lives in Archibald, Pennsylvania, and we're happy to have him here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on Agenda Items only. Would anyone like to discuss the agenda?
Bob Bowles-Scranton. On 25-0064, Grasshopper lawns. I don't understand why we're paying $6,000 for somebody to cut the grass when we have people that are employed here in Lackawanna County that should be doing that job. I think it's just a waste of money that we're giving it away. It's just, as far as I'm concerned, total mismanagement when you've got employees here and you've got all the equipment already in the county, they could cut their own grass around the courthouse. And the other one on 25-0061, I don't understand why it's the last thing on the agenda for Commissioner McGloin resignation, why it's not in the beginning. That means he's going to have something to say about what's ever on this agenda to that point. I don't understand why it's not right on the first part of the agenda, that is resignation. Could I get an answer?
There's no particular reason for it. It just, that's the way that the agenda was put together.
Well, I think it's a little ridiculous that...
There's no reason behind it.
I think it's a little ridiculous that it's at the end of the agenda and it should be in the beginning.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to...
Commissioner, just, I mean, normally is how the agendas are done is ordinances are first, followed by resolutions, and motions are last. And this would be a motion, so it's just, that's why it's last.
Okay, thank you.
And I just saw that the grasshopper. So let me tell you what I think. They don't cut the grass, first of all. So, a few years ago, the lawn over at the courthouse was full of weeds. It was, it looked awful. I mean, that is our premier property in the downtown, and it is the courthouse. And the last couple of years, it's been in the budget to have service to bring in, brought in to take care of the weeds and the grass that wasn't growing and make it look like it should. So, this is part of the, was in the budget to have grasshopper come in. It was, I think, we looked around to see who would be best. They didn't do it last year. So, once we get that back under control, which I know Mark Doer has done a good job getting that looking like it should, there's a lot of people that bring their dogs in there, and it was, it was looking terrible. So, you know, for this year, we decided maybe we'd do this one more time. We'll see how, we'll see how it looks after this year, and then hopefully our guys can maintain it from there. But this is not for lawn mowing, it's for lawn chemical treatments and stuff that's friendly to the pets and things like that. So, it's, it's more than just cutting. It's not cutting grass, it's chemical treatment, so.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board on Agenda Items only? Okay. Okay, first up, before we get into the ordinances and the resolutions, we do have a proclamation declaring the week of March 16th through the 22nd, 2025, as Pennsylvania 4-H Week in Lackawanna County. We have Penn State Extension Client Relationship Manager Jennifer...
I got it one day. Mercero.
Mercero, okay. So Jennifer, I'm just going to read this proclamation into the record, and then you can speak. Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country, and has helped 638 youth in Lackawanna County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders as they learn by doing. And whereas 4-H in Pennsylvania is delivered by Penn State Cooperative Extension in rural areas, small towns and cities in all 67 counties of the Commonwealth to more than 77,000 youth ages 5 through 18. And whereas 4-H youth in Pennsylvania are served by a network of staff members and more than 6,000 adult volunteers who engage and mentor youth in learning activities and hands-on projects in subjects such as animal science, civic engagement, STEM, and health and wellness. Whereas Pennsylvania 4-H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4-H inspires kids to achieve and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in Lackawanna County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. 4-H provides opportunities for leadership development, career exploration, problem-solving, friendships, community involvement, passion, and purpose. And now therefore, we, Bill Gahan and Chris Schirrmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim March 5th, 2025, as Pennsylvania 4-H Week in Lackawanna County. And now here to speak is Jennifer.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say to Mr. Griffin and all veterans, thank you for your service. Good morning, Commissioners, staff, and Lackawanna County residents. Thank you for inviting us here today to honor one of our Lackawanna County 4-H members. I'll give you a little bit more about 4-H in addition to what Commissioner Gahan has told us about. In 2023, over 113,000 total youth were reached by 4-H across Pennsylvania. Almost 3,000 classrooms were reached by the 4-H program. And volunteers brought a value of over $13 million in volunteer hours to Pennsylvania communities. 95% of alumni state they use skills that they learned in 4-H in their everyday lives. Some notable alumni include President Jimmy Carter, former First Lady Jackie Kennedy Onassis, and cartoonist Jim Davis, which means, yes, even Garfield the Cat was a member of 4-H. So today, we are here to honor Krista Sarr from Alefent. Krista does have some words, but I had typed up a few things about her as well. When Krista was 10 years old, she wanted to learn how to sew. After seeking out private sewing classes, she met our 4-H educator Sandy Graham. Sandy suggested to Krista's family that she join 4-H. They, like many people, were unaware that 4-H is not just for students that live on a farm, and I admit, I was one of those people before I started this job. Thanks to dedicated educators like Sandy, more and more students like Krista are finding out just what 4-H can do for them. Krista is now 17. She has learned to sew, she has taken cooking classes, she is part of teen council, and this year, she was accepted into the State Project Ambassadors, where her specialty is healthy living. She is the first Lackawanna County student to be chosen for this position, which is quite an honor. She's currently working on her first year of a two-year project for the Diamond Award, and her next goal is to be on State Council. She has accomplished so much since joining 4-H. Her mom states that she went from being a shy, quiet girl to really putting herself out there, and I think I can say firsthand, I'm a grown adult, and this is frightening to be in this room. So that shows what she's learned while she's been at 4-H, the fact that she'll speak. She's currently a dual enrollment student at Johnson College, where she's studying radiology. She's a volunteer firefighter, and she competes in archery. 4-H helped her to grow in ways beyond things she has learned within the organization. It has built her confidence and made her a well-rounded individual. Thanks to your support, Commissioners, Krista and her fellow 4-H members continue to shine in our community. She is proof that programs like 4-H are crucial to keep students focused on a bright future. And I do want to acknowledge that her 4-H educator has been promoted within Penn State Extension and couldn't be here today, so that's why I'm doing it for her.
I'm Krista. I'm 17 years old, and as she said, I started 4-H when I was 10. 4-H has given me so many ups, downs, opportunities, opportunities, and success, joy, and hope for the future. As a young, shy, 10-year-old girl that loved to craft and had a wild imagination, I realized that 4-H was the place that I felt safe. I felt judgment-free, in a space that gave me the confidence to meet and talk to new people, make new friends, and try and do hard things. It also let me have my creativity to where I wanted it. 4-H has let me break down so many personal barriers of mine, like completing projects I never thought would have been possible. Between making my own clothes, cooking things that both taste amazing and are good for you, and using mindfulness techniques that are fun and work. And even giving speeches, like I am today, and talking to people, which I have never gotten to do or gotten even the courage to do before. Me, being in 4-H and being a State Project Ambassador, has made me have so much faith in the future of 4-H, especially seeing all the new 4-Hers coming up behind me and seeing my old self in them. 4-H has done so much in making me the person I am today. I hope many others will be able to have that same experience. I could confidently say that joining 4-H has been the best decision that I have ever made. Between all the friends that I've made, all the opportunities I've had, and all the amazing memories I've kept, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to have that experience and keeping it alive so that other students could also have that experience.
Thank you very much. And if you'd like to come up to the front for a photo, and we'll give you the proclamation. Ordinance 25-0060.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the second reading of ordinance 297. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania pursuant to Act 48 of 2024, establishing a County Demolition and Rehabilitation Fund and imposing a fee to be collected by the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau for purchasers at sales under the real estate tax law and by the Lackawanna County Sheriff from Sheriff's Sales in Mortgage Foreclosure Actions, defining terms, and providing severability, repealer, and effective date. Within ordinance may be referred to as herein, to herein, and elsewhere as the Demolition Rehabilitation Fund Ordinance. Effective as the final adoption of this ordinance, a Lackawanna County Demolition Rehabilitation Fund shall be established by the Lackawanna County Treasurer pursuant to 72PS Subsection 5860.631. The Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorizes and directs the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau and the Office of the Lackawanna County Sheriff to collect a fee in the amount of $250 from each and every purchaser of real estate from a tax sale or a mortgage foreclosure sale, respectively. Any and all funds collected by the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau and the Office of the Lackawanna County Sheriff pursuant to this demolition and rehabilitation ordinance shall be promptly deposited by the Lackawanna County Treasurer into a designated fund for the exclusive purposes of the Lackawanna County Demolition and Rehabilitation Fund. Funds deposited and maintained in the Lackawanna County Demolition and Rehabilitation Fund shall be administered by the Lackawanna County Land Bank, which within its sole discretion may use the funds for its own demolition and/or rehabilitation projects, or may award funds by application on a competitive basis to municipalities, school districts, redevelopment authorities, and/or other nonprofit entities for demolition and/or rehabilitation of blighted properties within Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. This ordinance shall become effective 90 days upon its enactment. Mr. Chairman, as you, we did the first reading two weeks ago, any questions that you had then were answered. If you had, if you and Chairman Commissioner Schirmack have any follow-up questions, Director Magnotta's here to answer them for you.
Sure. Anything additional to add? Do you maybe just want to remind everybody what this is since...
Sure, absolutely. Pennsylvania Senate Bill Act 48 was passed in July of 2024, and it establishes a demolition and rehabilitation fund by adding a $250 fee to all tax delinquent property sales and also Lackawanna County Sheriff's Sales to mortgages and foreclosure sales. The Land Bank will oversee this, there's no cost to the county. So far, two other counties have just put this in place, Jefferson and Clarion, we would believe, I believe we would be the third county. We would start 90 days from now, but in those 90 days, it would, it would be the time for us to put what type of a program we would put in place for municipalities to benefit for, to come to us for rehabilitation and/or demolition money. As you know, oftentimes municipalities do not have very much money for demolition or rehabilitation of blighted properties, so it would be a real benefit to the county.
That's great, thank you. Any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion.
Second, on the question. On the question, as I mentioned at our last meeting, I'm really proud of this program. I think it's really forward-thinking, and as Director Magnotta said, we're only one of two other counties in the state of Pennsylvania that is utilizing this, this legislation. I think it's really going to help put money back into neighborhoods across Lackawanna County to either fight blight, or if the properties are beyond repair, to demolish them. So we're really excited about this. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the ordinance has been approved. Resolution 25-0067.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the following payables: Lackawanna County's General Fund, number 382660-383043, inclusive and totaling $3,433,172. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $7,158,996, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0053.
This is entering into a maintenance project agreement, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a maintenance project agreement on behalf of the Department of Roads and Bridges with the Conservation District for work on St. Mary's Villa Road in Elmhurst Township. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our District Manager, Conservation District Manager, Mr. Jerry Stiles.
Thank you. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. This is something we're pretty excited about at the Conservation District, so this would be an effort between the District and the Roads and Bridges Department to do a project on St. Mary's Villa Road to improve drainage on the road. So we'll be improving drainage and installing new drainage practices. The District is going to provide $45,613.72 for the project, which covers the cost of the materials, and the Roads and Bridges folks will be doing the work on the project. I'd also like to frank, or thank Frank Suma with GPI, who assisted the Roads and Bridges folks with the application. All the funding would come through the Conservation District, it's part of our low-volume roads program, and we receive money every year from the State Conservation Commission to provide to local municipalities for projects on their roads.
Is this the first time, Mr. Stiles, that you've had this partnership with Roads and Bridges?
Yes, it is. So that's another reason why we're looking forward to it, yes.
Great, very good.
And these funds are specifically for low-volume roads, dirt and gravel roads, things like that.
That's correct, sir.
And I know that, that roads had an issue with ice buildup in the wintertime, and so it's, it's been needed for a long time.
Hopefully, we're going to address that by improving the drainage and installing new roadside swales to take the flow away from running down the middle of the road.
That's great. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
If I could, while I'm here, can I just do a quick plug for our annual seedling sale?
Absolutely.
So we're in the middle of taking orders. If anyone is interested, you can download an order form just by going to our website at LCCD.net, or you can call 570-382-3086 for an order form. And I've got a couple here with me as well, and I'll leave them here.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0056.
Authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance to satisfy public officials' bond requirements. Whereas in over 23rd, 2011, Act 106 became effective immediately, authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance covering county officers and employees, replacing prior requirements that certain individual officers of the county have separate bonds. Whereas pursuant to subsection 1130A of the Act, which requires the County Board of Commissioners as the governing body of County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, to establish a procedure by which it shall annually determine the form and require amount of required security that will be reasonably sufficient to protect against the risks of loss in compliance with the subsection of the Act, whereas Section 1129 of the Act requires that the form of a blanket bond or crime insurance obtained in compliance with the Act shall be approved by the governing body of the county, after review by the county solicitor and consultation with the county risk manager. Now therefore, be it resolved, the county shall hereby adopt the following procedure for compliance with provisions of Pennsylvania Act 106. Number one, the county risk manager is hereby designated to submit information to the Board of Commissioners as to the amount of security that the risk manager recommends that the county maintain during the succeeding year, and to provide the information as set forth below to enable the Board of Commissioners to place into force the blanket bond or crime insurance required by the Act for the succeeding year. Number two, in the course of performing the duties assigned under one above, the county insurance and risk manager shall confer with the county solicitor to determine the form and content of the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the Act. Number three, the county risk manager will obtain competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record for the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with provisions of the Act. And number four, upon receipt and review of the competitive proposals, the county's designated broker of record, the county risk manager shall present to the Board of Commissioners for consideration and approval, the form and amount required security, together with the recommendation as to the blanket bond or crime insurance that will satisfy the requirements as set forth in the Act. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Insurance and Risk Manager, Mr. Jack Judge.
Morning. Good morning. I'm here today to ask for approval of the crime policy. The effective date would be 1-1-2025 to and including 1-1-2026. This policy protects county employees against theft, crime, and it pretty much has, as much is alluded in the, in Brian's presentation. The, the county seeks several, several quotes, and this is the, the best policy quote that our broker, who is assigned by the county, has given us. So it's a protection that we need in this day, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Judge? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0058.
This is entering into a hazmat agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a hazardous materials emergency response agreement with Eagle Response Services, 1049 South Eagle Valley Road, Bellefonte, Pennsylvania. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Emergency Management Director, Mr. Tom Taylor.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We were notified in late 2024 that our current Pima-certified response team was no longer going to be certifying themselves. So that came to need, that we would have to get, according to Act 165, in the state of Pennsylvania, we were required to have a Pima-certified response hazardous materials response team. We met with two companies. The one is with, out of the two-hour response timeframe. We met with Eagle Response and Towing out of Bellefonte, PA. They are putting in a satellite, or they have put in a satellite response location in Goosboro, which is inside the county of Lackawanna. So, to fulfill the Pima certification of one Act, Act 165, and they've been in business for 30 years, after speaking with them, I recommend that we go with them. This is at no cost to the county. They handle all the billing and everything through the insurance companies, and they will respond to non-emergent and emergency hazmat incidents.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0059.
This is entering into an agreement with Diamond Baseball Holdings, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering an agreement with the Scranton-Wilkes-Barre Rail Riders Diamond Baseball Holdings SBW LLC for a high school baseball All-Star game, dubbed "The Field of Dreams" in June 2025. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Community Relations, Mr. Mark Cordelli.
Chief, thank you, sir. Commissioners, good morning. Yes, this agreement allows the county to put on a first-class event for the residents, allowing approximately 40 to 50 baseball players that might not be able to have the opportunity to, to shine or be able to step on a major league AAA farm team's baseball field. It's another way for us, the county, to show its wonderful amenities. The proceeds, there are a little fundraising component to this, goes to the Howerton Foundation, which is a cancer awareness program, that also does give back a scholarship to high schools, baseball players, or softball players. So we're seeking your approval for this agreement. Any questions?
Okay.
Great, great thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0065.
This is awarding the arts and cultural program grants, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the 2025 Lackawanna County Arts and Program Grants in the amount of $240,000 to the organizations as per attached. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Marie McGuigan.
Good morning. I just love this program. We have it every year. This is an opportunity for our leaders around the county, whether you're a nonprofit, municipality, or individual, to come up with an idea that makes our county great. So, these are all projects all over the county, which we will get you the information on that, the calendar, so that you can attend, many of them free. And so I think it's just great that our county can invest in these leaders. The idea is always easy, the implementation is hard. So, these are all vetted, though, internally and by an external panel, and they are for the public.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Director McGuigan? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. On the question, I just want to thank Marie McGuigan and her group that vetted all these applications, and $240,000 to 36 groups throughout Lackawanna County, that's going to have a huge impact. Our local artists and cultural organizations, as everyone knows, bring people together, and they also drive tourism from outside Lackawanna County. And by funding these programs, we're not only preserving our rich heritage, but we're also continuing to create new opportunities for education, for innovation, and for economic growth. We all know that Lackawanna County has always had a vibrant art scene, and we want to continue that tradition, and I think this program does that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0066.
This is awarding the arts and cultural project grants, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the 2025 Lackawanna County Arts and Cultural Project Grants in the amount of $80,000 as attached here, too. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director McGuigan.
I have to apologize, I got really excited about both these programs, so I think I identified the project grants first, but this is very similar. I'll just say what I should have said before, the program grants are for nonprofits. Many of you have probably attended those that we fund, but it's, it's the same principle. So, the program that was read before is for established nonprofits, and the project grants are kind of what I went over before, that individuals, municipalities, and nonprofits can apply for those.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much. Resolution 25-0062.
Entering into a maintenance agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a one-year maintenance agreement with Reed's Generator Service LLC for the following locations: the courthouse, Jefferson Avenue Gateway Building, the Government Center, the Criminal Justice Center, and 315 Franklin Avenue, to expire February 28th, 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Mark Doer.
Reed's Generator...
Reed's Generator, good morning, everybody. Reed's Generator's been doing this project, well, not the project, but the generators in Lackawanna County for years, and I feel confident that they could maintain and keep our generators running at all times. So we have it broken down to each building, the total cost is $4,850 for the buildings that Director, I mean, Mr. Jeffers just mentioned.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Doer? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0063.
Entering into an agreement with Otis Elevator. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby enter into a one-year agreement with Otis Elevator for 135 Jefferson Avenue, Scranton, and it costs $7,658. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on March 5, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Doer.
These are Otis elevators, so when you go to buy parts for Otis elevator, you have to deal with that. So this maintenance contract with Otis elevator will take care of that building for one year. We don't have any problems with it, and I don't see any problems in the future with these elevators.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Doer? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Okay, next up is the very controversial Grasshopper contract that I know you're going to speak on. Make a motion to accept the quote from Grasshopper Lawns for the courthouse at a cost of $5,961. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, here to speak on this again is Mr. Doer. Mark?
Yes. There's actually five treatments throughout the year, okay? That'll break down to $3,005, okay? It's 601 apiece. The core narration is $2,119, okay? That has to be done every year, so everything will take hold. The grubs to keep the skunks away and everything like that is $837, so we're the total of $5,961 for the year. And the first aeration and application on Earth Day is April 22, 2025, and that's free.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Thank you very much. Next up is a motion to accept the resignation of Commissioner Matt McGloin, dated February 21, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Just on the question, and I know we just approved it, but, you know, the people of Lackawanna County elected us to lead and be part of a responsible, and part of that responsibility is making decisions that allow government to function efficiently. There's been some speculation about how this vote will go, but to me, the path forward was clear. We need to move past this moment and refocus on the real work ahead, getting this county back on track swiftly as possible. The financial challenges we face require our full attention, and we simply cannot afford to be distracted by delays or uncertainty. It's imperative that we move forward and get back to doing the job that we were elected to do. That's what the people of Lackawanna County expect, and that's what they deserve.
Thank you. On the question, Commissioner McGloin was a valued partner and a valued leader. He helped me enact meaningful change that will make Lackawanna County a better place to live and work, and quite frankly, he made some really difficult decisions with me last year that needed to be done and that we had no choice but to enact, but it is for the betterment of this county and all the financial challenges that we face. I respect his decision to resign, and I wish him nothing best, nothing but the best for him and for his entire family. The process being followed to name his successor threatens to turn the county over to a small group of politicos, and that process is depriving our court of common pleas of its statutory duty and authority to oversee the application and selection process and to conduct the process openly and transparently, and that is what state law requires. Unfortunately for the court, it was handed a short list of candidates, people that have not been fully vetted. That is not fair to the court, the good citizens of Lackawanna County, or legitimate interested applicants that were ignored and turned away. The tainted process that was used certainly invites further challenges. My resolve to stand up for what the law requires and the transparency that the citizens of Lackawanna County deserve is undiminished. The light of day will, as it always does, eventually shine on the facts behind the closed-door process used to handpick these candidates. The facts are always stubborn. People have a right to know how commissioners are chosen. All interested applicants should be considered by the court. It is in that context and only that context that I regretfully accept Commissioner McGloin's resignation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda-Wan at Scranton. Thank you very much for posting the 2023 audit on the website. Have you chosen a date for your public hearing yet?
Tentatively, it's at the end of March. We haven't drilled down on a date yet. We're going back and forth with the auditor, but it will be at the end of March, sorry.
And you'll have a legal notice in the paper, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And since we're talking about upcoming events, I see that tomorrow at 10:30 in this conference room, PFM is gonna present its findings and recommendations.
Correct.
That'd be a good one for anybody who's got the time and ability to come down to take a five-year look at where we are going financially, so I'll be here. And March 10, 6 to 8 p.m. at Lackawanna College, a public forum hands off our health care, a town hall on Medicare and Medicaid cuts. I think, you know, we all have a vested interest in health care in this county, that may be a good one, especially for people who, you know, are off work and then can get to that. And finally, March 13, 4 p.m. at the Hilton Hotel, Save Regional Hospital, another public town hall. You know, we all complain when we get our tax bills and when we get bad news, but we need to keep abreast as concerned citizens of what's going on. So these are all opportunities for the public to stay informed, and I hope we see a lot of our elected officials there, too. It's important. Now, I was a little upset about something that happened recently, and I'll tell you why. You know I've been on the county's Library Assistant Board since before COVID, so it's been a few years. And several weeks ago, I got contacted and told that I needed to submit a photo of myself as a member of the board so that it could be posted on the website. And without going into too many details, I did not like having my picture taken, okay? I understand that I'm on TV right now, and, you know, those things happen, but I will, I just don't like doing it, okay? And so I asked some questions and drilled down and tracked down a memorandum signed by all three commissioners, copies to the Chief of Staff and the Chief Solicitor, a January 8 memorandum. And let me just read the appropriate part. The following information is needed as per the Sunshine Act. One, a copy of the meeting schedule for the year. Two, a copy of the minutes for each meeting once they are approved. Three, a copy of the bylaws, all that makes sense under the Sunshine Act. Four, a photograph of each member which will be posted on your webpage on the county website. And I said, say what? So I downloaded the Sunshine Act. It's not that long. And by gosh and by golly, if I could not find anything, any mention of photographs in this act, so can somebody explain this memorandum and this requirement and why I can't find it in the Sunshine Act?
Yeah, this was actually, it was my idea. It was just to further make the whole process of boards, authorities, and commissions more transparent. In other words, when we first took office, what we found was a lot of the websites were either blank, or there wasn't a lot of information. Sometimes there was no minutes that were on the website, and not even a list of who the members were. So I thought it would be a good idea not only to put the names of the people, but whether it's a group photo or an individual photo, so that people in the county know who these people are serving on the board. So that was the whole idea behind it.
Is it a requirement to sit on a board?
No, it was just a suggestion. It's not-
Oh, didn't read as a suggestion.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I would prefer it, because I think people want to know who sit on these boards.
That's fine. You know, I mean, I think people see me enough already, and I'll be happy to give you a curriculum vitae, but I'm very sensitive. But if you want a photo, there you go.
Well, maybe one of our new 4H girls that likes to draw, maybe they could just draw a picture of you.
I'm in favor of it. Marie Schumacher, citizen of Scranton, and taxpayers, I might add. I wish you people could get together with the city council and do something about that god-awful wall that is between the Radisson Hotel and the building at the corner of Lackawanna and Adams Avenue. That is disgusting. It needs to be knocked down and re-put up and not look the way it does. It certainly doesn't look very, as beautiful as not even, I enable, but I don't know, it just needs to be changed. I-
It doesn't look too good. I think that's part of the Radisson that I think would own that property, I'm not sure.
So it is part of, I had met last year Ms. Schumacher with Mayor Cognetti and city officials. That is part of a bigger project with a complete kind of redo of the streets downtown in downtown Scranton, and they do have money for that project, and you will see that being unveiled pretty soon, and it's going to look really, really nice. But they're going to do a complete rehab of the wall, new sidewalks, new period lighting, so, yeah.
I know it needs to be knocked down. It will be this year, then?
I don't know if it'll be this year, but it's, I know it's on track, I don't know the exact date. I'd have to check in with Mayor Cognetti again, but it is being planned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want planned, I want building.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Commissioners, Bob Ballis, Scranton. One of the things I questioned, Guyhan, is that your challenge at the process of the Democrat system that was done. I think it was an insult to the board that did the best they could do considering what had to be done to replace McGloin. But you know what I don't understand, or I don't think you understand, there's another commissioner sitting on the side of you. Whoever gets on that seat has to understand, it's not just about you that they're going to work with, they gotta work with Commissioner Chermack as well. There's two commissioners sitting on that board, the third one will be the same, and I hope that's an independent individual, not a yes person. And I think that's what you were hoping for, and I think it was wrong for you to criticize the Democrat system, because you didn't get your own way and get a yes boy behind you. And I think that was wrong. You owe them an apology. It's not where we run, have dictators in here like we had from Ukraine and people like that, you know? There's another commissioner here. You turned around and you had the tax claim list all my properties, which I know you were behind.
Wait a minute, that is not true.
Okay, well, anyway.
That is not true.
All right. We'll get to the bottom of it as we can see.
Keep digging, because that's not true.
So I was happy it was done for the simple reason it opened up the door for the 18 and a half plus million dollars I'm owed by Lackawanna County for when they violated the Superior Court order to remove a tax lien from me personally for real estate taxes. It's still in effect against me, and I was happy to see that, because it's not going anywhere as far as the county's going to try and sell my properties. Number one. Number two, they better pay me the 18 and a half plus million dollars first. So I'm happy to see that that really happened for a change, because it just opened the door and saved me a lot of legal litigation to get to the point that I'm going to be at now. You know, when I look at everything here that you were arguing with people, you were instrumental without people having a comment and Biden's name going up on Spruce Street, changing it, the expressway. We'll have over 25,000 signatures right now, and I'm going to be holding during the parade a petition signing at 400 Spruce Street, which is leased by one of my companies, Ballis Environmental Group, and we are an environmental company, just so you know that, to get more petitions signed to remove Biden from our city, period. And I just started laughing when I started seeing all this here, what's been going on with, why we dictate, why we just try to get things done. You know, you had had, because you didn't like what I had to say one day, and I was sitting down, had the sheriff come and remove me, he grabbed my shoulder, and it's well photographed, and he tore the ligament of my left shoulder blade, which, I've been to Florida, I've been here locally for treatment, and now I'm scheduled to go have surgery, and I want to thank you for what you ordered them to do, because you're going to pay me the price back for what you did to me. This is about us and the people in this city. It's not a dictatorship, and it's something you did in the city of Scranton, where you kept dictating your way or the highway for everybody, and it's something that you're attempting to do here in Lackawanna County, and I'm going to be very upfront with you. As a citizen of this community, we're not going to allow it. You know, it's something that you were accustomed to doing. You shortchanged the commissioner here when he even asked me a question, basically had to shut up and listen to your dictator way. He couldn't ask somebody, whether it's anybody here, a question to respond, you shut them down, you did it to me and you did it to others. And it's just something, I hope now things are going to change, we're going to have a neutral person sitting in there that won't be subjected to your dog and pony show. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, people, how are you? Hello, Commissioners, how are you?
Morning.
I'm very sorry to see what happened with Commissioner McGloin, and I am not a Democrat, but, as everybody knows. But I have to say, and I don't usually agree with anything in the Scranton Times, as everybody knows as well, but Chris Kelly was spot on in his article. I see a coup, just as you do. Any Republican that doesn't read the paper, I suggest you find someone with Sunday's article and read it. I don't know how the Democrats work their votes or anything, but I do know how the Republicans do, because we have replaced commissioners before, when we had somebody leave. And the way it worked was that the people that applied had to be interviewed in front of all of our committee people, and there was a vote. And I'm not sure if that's the way it worked this time. So again, Commissioner Guyhan, you're going to get me in trouble, because I keep siding with you. I mean, it's interesting to me that when you first came on and you did two acts that I said to you, at this day is, I completely agree, well, it was in music, but I completely agree with what you did. It was justified. I really wish that more people looked into that to find out why. I know that I had gone to the Scranton Times when I was a commissioner to look into those kind of items. Never happened. I even had the opportunity to hand in information to the Attorney General's Office. People don't know a lot of the things that I did, and they don't know a lot of things behind the scenes. And I'm a little scared saying it right now, because I don't know what's going to happen with those comments, but I'm really worried about our county. What is happening is not good, and I've been worried. I've been worried for a while. I mean, that's why I ran, obviously. But there are some things that happened in the past couple of years that we're not supposed to talk about as commissioners, and I- And I seriously hope that the Scranton Times and the news will delve more into what happened in this process and the past of some of the people that may be sitting in that seat soon. And to the county people, God help you. This is, this is interesting, what's going to happen, but I'm, I don't know. I don't know what's going to happen afterwards, but I wish you luck and I'm sorry that this happened to you. I know you had plans. And like I said, I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying that because a lot of people, like my friend Bob, does not like Mr. Gahan, Commissioner Gahan, I apologize. And we all have a job to do, but I don't know what more to say. I just hope that the judges make the right decision because it looks like we're getting a lot of interim people these days. We have an interim judge, an interim DA, and now an interim commissioner for a long period of time. And we have a tax increase that just went through that I definitely do not agree with any of that. I think many things could have been done that could have helped that. I don't agree with the way you handled that. But this is going to be interesting to see what happens here, and I'm really sorry and I wish I could have helped prevent it. And I'm standing here hoping that the judges really, really focus on who gets that seat and look into the past. That's the best I can do without saying anything that I'm not sure I'm supposed to say, Donnie. And you know what I'm talking about. So good luck to the residents of the county. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir?
My name is Joe Totino. I'm from the pizza capital of the world, Old Forge, Pennsylvania. Just want to let you know we have a new pizza place, Bobo's Pizza, took over for Giudrelli's at Old Forge. So if anybody wants the best pizza at Old Forge, go to Bobo's. The reason I'm here this morning, I'm still very upset about the tax increase. I got my tax bill in the mail, two properties, close to a thousand dollar increase, plus the assessment coming is probably going to take me over the top. I mentioned before, the last time I was here, about two things that you guys should do. The first is the nonprofits in the city. I'd like to have a right to know whoever can do it, Chris or Bill. I'd like to know all the nonprofits in the city. I'd like to know from the top University of Scranton all the way down. I would like to know what they contribute and go to them, especially the University of Scranton, who's making boatloads of money on tuition and for dormitories and all that stuff. You have to go to them. The second thing, I ran into our ex-mayor, Mr. Doherty. I saw him at Tim Wagner's. We discussed it, and I asked him, what would you do to help the finances in the county? And he said, I said, would you go down to Josh Shapiro in Harrisburg and ask him for money? He said, when I was mayor, I went to Edrendel. I got $50 million for the mall, Steamtown Mall. Shapiro has boatloads of cash and the COVID money. He's handing it out all over the state. I don't understand why you guys can't get in your car, go down and talk to him, get on your knees and say, hey, listen, we're desperate. The citizens of Lackawanna County are desperate right now. People are going to lose their homes. They cannot afford to pay this anymore. I'm out on the streets every day listening to people, morning, noon, and night, and they come up to me, Joe, what can be done to curb these taxes? I understand that you guys inherited this. Fine, but you cannot, the easiest thing you can do is to put it on the back of the taxpayers. The easiest thing you can do. What I'm going to say is I don't think you've done enough to go through that budget, line item by line item, to find out what could be cut. I was told that there's nothing that could be cut in there. Chris Chermack disagrees with that, and I'd like to see, item by item, what could be cut out of that budget. There's got to be something. You cannot leave this on the back of the taxpayers. So you've got two choices. Go after the nonprofits. I want to see who they are and why isn't anybody going after the University of Scranton? Bill, I'd like you to answer that. Or Chris, why isn't anybody going after them that are buying up all the properties in the city, taking them off the tax rolls, and then putting that burden on the taxpayers? I need an answer to that question. Why? Tell me why.
You're talking about a structural deficit. So to your earlier point, when you had said, go down to Harrisburg and see if you can get whatever, $50 million, the problem with that thought process is, with all due respect to you, is that the following year, you wouldn't have that $50 million. That is how the county got themselves in this position. They were using one-time revenue sources, which is what you're, I think, referring to. That is a whole problem here. So every year, they would say, okay, I got, let's say, $10 million in ARPA, let's plug a hole. The hole only gets bigger over time until you finally address it. And that's what we did last year. I know it wasn't popular, but that was the honest-to-God right thing to do and really the only thing to do, in my opinion. To your second point, in submitting a right to know, I would submit the right to know to the city of Scranton if you want to know what all the nonprofits are in the city of Scranton. In terms of the University of Scranton, when I was on council, they were a great partner with the city of Scranton. They bring in a ton of economic development to the city and to Lackawanna County with all the students and everything else that they bring here. So I don't know that, you know, you want to really turn them into the scapegoat for the problems of the county. Even if they did contribute more, last year, we still had a, what started out with a $37 million deficit. So that's, that's my comments on that.
Well, they have a lot of money. Why can't you get them to donate some money? I know they donate, but what is it? How much do they donate?
I don't know off the top of my head. They used to give a pilot payment, payment in lieu of taxes. I think at one time, it was $275,000. I don't know if it went up or it went down because I haven't been on council in a couple of years, but I would go to the city and ask them, and they should be able to get you that information. Okay?
Well, the city's asked them, and they will contribute enough to the city. The city has a problem with it.
Okay. Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sure.
I want to say that I agree with my new friend, Lori Cumming. Thanks for that. It'll be the only time, but thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Yeah, the process by which the candidates were selected, and correctly described as the backdoor process by Mr. Gahan. And I have a question for you, Chris, that pertains to that. Did you have a private meeting with Marty Flynn and/or Chris Patrick or any of the candidates to replace McGloin?
So absolutely not, first of all. Do you think Marty Flynn is going to have a private meeting with me, seriously? Or Chris Patrick?
I'm asking the question, that's all. So you answered a question.
No, I'm on the other team, so no. I'm not privy to what they're deciding.
You had no such meeting?
I have no, nothing to do with who they select.
Have a discussion with anyone that, all right. That's fine. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Chermack?
Well, that was, that was an interesting question. So with the resignation of Commissioner McGloin, you know, I think we turn the page on a very challenging chapter. Now it's time to refocus on getting the county back on track. While we wait for the Court of Common Pleas to decide on his replacement, not my decision, but the Court of Common Pleas, which I certainly don't have any influence over, while we wait on them to decide on his replacement, I look forward to welcoming whoever that person might be. And I look forward to working together to move Lackawanna County forward. Throughout all of this, my priorities have never changed. I'm committed to ensuring, I'm committed to ensuring that the work together and to make responsible financial decisions for the people we serve. The budget remains my top priority, and I will be focused on identifying cost-saving measures across departments to ease the burden on taxpayers. The recent enormous 33% tax increase has placed a significant strain on families, homeowners, and businesses. That's why we must work together to rein in spending, find efficiencies, and make sure every dollar is spent wisely. If we work together with the best interests of the county in mind, we can make the tough but necessary decisions to enable, ensure a stable and prosperous future for Lackawanna County. Thank you.
Just a few updates and reminders. So the PFM meeting this Thursday will be at 10:30 a.m. in the fifth floor boardroom. This will be the presentation of a five-year financial management plan that we have been working on, Commissioner McGloin and I were working on with PFM for the better part of the last year. I have heard the 33% tax increase being brought up and used as a weapon against me, which is fine. I understand that. The only thing I'll say on that is just to reiterate what I had said last year, which is when people elected me, they elected me to tell you the truth and to give it to you straight. And that's what I did last year with the budget. And if we had done what previous administrations had done, which is kick the can down the road, robbed Peter to pay Paul, used one-time revenue sources, I probably could have did that last year and maybe got away with it for another year and look good to people in this community. But that would have been setting the county back even further. I had every financial expert in this county, from PFM to the people that we have in this building, look at that budget from the very beginning and go through it line item by line item. And we made a conscious decision to cut 90 positions, to cut an entire department, to change the way that health care is delivered to county employees, starting with myself, the commissioners, and the non-union folks here, which was also difficult, and a lot of other moves that certainly are not sexy and, you know, don't make the headlines, but they're necessary to turn the financial condition of this county around. So on, on paper, it sounds good to say, you know, people are getting killed by this 33% tax increase. I understand that, and believe me, my phone has been ringing off the hook since we did this back in October, and then again when people got their tax bills. I understand it. I have five children under the age of nine that my wife and I are raising, okay? I have two parents who are senior citizens. I understand it has had an impact. But we didn't have a choice. And the only question that I'd ask everybody in this room and everybody who might be watching on TV is, would you rather have me lied to you like the previous administrations have done and kicked the can down the road a little bit longer just so that it makes me look good? I can't do that. I didn't run for office to lie to people. By the way, everything that we did the past year has been with turning the county around financially. And everything that we've done has been completely transparent. I mean, jeez, the first month that I was in office, office in January, I sat up here at this very seat, and I told you what was coming. I told you what we had uncovered. $19 million in unpaid bills, $35, $36 million structural deficit, you know, nobody's having staff meetings, operational challenges. It was a nightmare. We have made great strides in the last year, great strides, and it, I'm certain, will come at a political cost to me. But that's not why I ran for office. I ran for office to give it to you straight and to tell the truth and to try to move this thing in the right direction. And that will come, again, sure, at a political cost to me, but that's not why I got involved in public service. It was to try to do the right thing, give it to people straight, tell the truth, and that's it. And that's the bottom line. A couple other things. February 25th, as I'm sure everybody in this room is aware, the president of Penn State, Neely Bendaputi, announced that 12 of the university's Commonwealth campuses, including Scranton's, which is located in Dunmore, are under review for closure. I don't think I have to say this because I'm sure everybody understands, a closure would be absolutely devastating for our entire county and for our entire region. Penn State Scranton offers an awful lot to our community. 14 bachelor's degrees in the fields of mechanical engineering, IT, nursing, and business. Its base annual tuition rate is one of the lowest in our entire region. About 80% of the campus's 820 students are from northeastern Pennsylvania. 55% are from right here in Lackawanna County. They employ more than 200 faculty and staff, most of which are from Lackawanna County, and they have more than 17,000 alumni. They contribute more than $40 million every year to our economy in northeastern Pennsylvania. So I'm in the process of setting up a meeting with Penn State officials to make it clear that the campus that we have here in Dunmore is invaluable, invaluable to our local economy, to our students, and to our, our education system. So I'm hoping that the rest of you will join me in calling them and making sure that they, that they fully understand how huge of an impact that will have if they decide to close our campus. There have been hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements made to that building up there, and it really is first-class, state-of-the-art technology. So a closure would, would be devastating. I had a great, I know there's been a lot going on, obviously, with the resignation, but I do want to let people know that I have not stopped working. I haven't just been sitting up in the office, you know, thinking about the resignation. I've been meeting with people and continuing to try to move this county forward. We had a great meeting with Nancy Walker, who is the Pennsylvania Secretary of Labor and Industry at our Pennsylvania Career Link, and we also met with our County Workforce Development Board. And that was a really, really crucial meeting because our workforce development team, including Virginia Toronto, who heads up that operation, is doing an absolutely wonderful job. So that, that conversation, I think, went really well. We also delivered laptops to the Albright Memorial Library, which was made possible from an ARPA Technology Connectivity Grant from our former president, Joe Biden, that our Economic Development Department wrote for the libraries. And the computers are going to be available at the Albright and the Abington and Valley Community Libraries. And what I had said when I spoke to those library officials the other day was that this grant was particularly important in light of the misinformation and disinformation that's going on currently in the United States of America. So it's important for us to continue to promote literacy, digital literacy, and make sure that people know the difference between what is fake news and what is real news. And it's, it's so important in 2025. I participated in Read Across America Week as a guest reader at John F. Kennedy Elementary School, McNichols Plaza, and Charles Sumner Elementary Schools. And I want to thank those principals and those teachers. They're doing a wonderful job, and it was great to meet and talk with those students. I also want to wrap up here by saying that we are starting the celebration of Irish American Heritage Month. We had a flag raising and a replaying ceremony at the Statue of General Sheridan, which was held on Courthouse Square. And of course, this Saturday, March 8th, at 11:45 a.m., the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade will be held in downtown Scranton. There will be several road closures, so please celebrate safely. And the County of Lackawanna Transit System bus will offer free rides on Saturday. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone.